Good evening and welcome to the special city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 30th, 2023, and it is 6:02 PM. City Clerk Assistant, please call roll.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Winstead?
Present.
Councilmember Jenaway?
Here.
Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. And now I would like to ask Councilmember Stephanie Winstead to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would everybody please stand and follow me? Please place your hand over your heart. Veterans may salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Please be seated.
Sorry, I had to.
We will now move on to public comments. Any person wishing to address the city council, we need to complete complete and present a gold color request to speak form to the city clerk. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the door of the council chambers. Please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each person to speak. This is a time for members of the public to share comments with the city council. The Brown Act does not allow the city council to respond to speakers at the meeting. However, city staff will follow up and respond to questions or provide information needed. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Assistant, are there any request to speak forms?
No, Mayor, there are none.
Wonderful. Public comments is now closed. We will now move on to our study session item. That is the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 operating and capital budget. City Manager Loturno, will you and your team please provide us a report on this item?
Yes, I'll be happy to. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. It's a pleasure to present the fiscal year 2023-24 operating and capital improvement budget to you this evening. This year's budget motto, "Strength Through Purpose", is reflective of the city's longstanding and intentional commitment to excellence in service, a key strength that is attained through purposeful budgeting, planning, engagement, development, and preservation. Laguna Niguel's conservative fiscal practices continue to result in a strong financial position. It is truly this position that allows for the city's purpose to be carried out year after year. The fiscal year 2023-24 operating and capital improvement budget is balanced at $60.8 million without utilizing any reserves. Further, the budget includes an allocation of $500,000 to the city's infrastructure reserves for future capital projects. This budget was built on our foundation, which is our mission, vision, and values. Specifically, it's our strategic plan that sets our goals, objectives, and strategies that guide our decision-making and our work plan. This budget carries out the goals and objectives identified in the adopted strategic plan, provides the highest quality of services and programs to the community, including our fun activities that we all enjoy. It maintains and upgrades the city's existing infrastructure and plans for the future through the continuation of the city's general plan update. This evening, you will hear details regarding our projected revenues, expenditures, and reserve levels from Finance Director Agrelius, and each department director will be presenting an overview of the responsibilities of their departments and key elements included in each department's budget, and we will share the capital improvement projects planned for next year. Now I'd like to turn this over to Finance Director Agrelius, who will present an overview of our revenues and expenditures.
Thank you, City Manager Loturno. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm excited to present the budget overview for the preliminary fiscal year 2023-2024 operating and capital improvement budget for the city of Laguna Niguel. The preliminary general fund budget is balanced, with general fund revenues coming in at $52.6 million compared to general fund expenditures budgeted at $52.1 million. This results in a general fund budget surplus of $500,000. Staff is recommending that the city council commit the $0.5 million budget surplus to increasing the city's deferred maintenance, capital assets, and infrastructure reserves. The city's financial reserves policy states that, quote, "Sound financial management includes the practice and discipline of maintaining adequate reserve funds for known and unknown contingencies." Staff's recommendation is consistent with the city's financial reserves policy. As has been the case historically, property taxes and sales taxes account for approximately 80% of all general fund revenues. Property taxes are estimated to increase 3.7% as compared to the fiscal year 2223 budget, totaling $26.8 million for the upcoming year. Sales taxes are projected to be $15.0 million in fiscal year 2324, which represents a 4.8% increase over the fiscal year 2223 adopted budget. This slide provides a more detailed breakdown of the different revenue categories in the general fund. Total general fund revenues are increasing by $3.4 million, or 6.9%, as compared to the fiscal year 2223 budget. Interest income is projected to increase by approximately 250% in fiscal year 2324, due in part to an increase in interest rates and a concerted effort to actively take advantage of those higher rates by city staff. Community development revenue is projected to increase by 41% in the upcoming fiscal year, mostly due to a $1 million increase in building and safety fees. The Community Development Department conducted a fee study in the current fiscal year to look at planning-related fees. The last time these fees were adjusted was in 2005. At that time, the fully burden rate was calculated at $90 per hour, but the council opted to leave the fee at $79 per hour at that time. The fee study conducted this year resulted in a recommended rate of $155 per hour to fully recover the city's costs of administering the planning functions. As part of the fee study, staff compared the planning fee for other South Orange County cities and noted the average fee was $156 per hour. Staff is recommending that the hourly fee for planning functions be increased, but in a phased approach from $79 per hour currently to $116 per hour in fiscal year 2324 and to $155 per hour in fiscal year 2425. The Community Development Department is also proposing to add a technology fee and a general plan maintenance fee, both of which will be assessed at 2% of building fees. These fees will provide necessary funding to maintain the software and other technology-based services, as well as future updates to the city's general plan. These are fees also charged by other cities, and those fees do vary. However, the city of Laguna Niguel's proposed fees for the technology and general plan maintenance are at or below average of the other cities in Orange County. The city is also requesting that city council approve a revision to the convenience fee for credit card transactions for community development activities. Last year, the city council approved staff's recommendation to pass the fee for the convenience of using a credit card onto the customer. At that time, the city council adopted the pass-through to be a specific fee amount that the city was being charged at that time. However, the current payment solution platform will no longer be supported, and the city will be implementing a new solution in early 2024. Because the convenience fee is set by the payment solutions provider and is subject to change, staff is recommending that the city council approve the convenient fee charge as a 100% pass-through rather than a specific percentage. A resolution will be included in the staff report for the June 20th city council meeting. And I did want to note, there will continue to be no additional fees for any payments received via cash or checks, as is currently the practice. The preliminary fiscal year 2324 budget includes two requests for additional full-time positions, bringing the total full-time personnel to 66 if approved. The Community Development Department is requesting the addition of a planning manager, and the Administration Department is requesting the addition of a management analyst. Additionally, there are eight reclassifications included as part of this budget. These new positions and reclassifications will be discussed later in this presentation. These staffing changes are being requested to provide the appropriate allocation of resources to meet the goals and objectives set forth in the city's strategic plan. In total, general fund expenditures and transfers out decreased by $1.4 million as compared to the prior-year budget. However, the fiscal year 2223 budget figure that you see on the screen here includes the $4.8 million in what we call additional discretionary payments, or ADPs, that were sent to CalPERS to reduce the city's net unfunded pension liability. Those payments were approved by the city council in November 2022 and resulted in an increase to the total fiscal year 2223 budget appropriations. If we were to exclude those payments, the general fund expenditures are actually increasing by approximately $3.4 million, or 6.5% over the fiscal year 2223 budget. That 6.5% increase is primarily driven by overall inflationary conditions, an increase to the city's street maintenance contract, and a projected increase to the contract with Orange County Sheriff's Department for the city's police services. The fiscal year 2324 budget also includes a $200,000 allocation from the general fund to provide funding for the Sea Country Senior and Community Center Roof Replacement Project. This allocation can be seen in the table on screen under the Transfers Out line item. I would now like to discuss the projected general fund fund balance, which incorporates the projected results for the preliminary fiscal year 2324 budget. The budgeted year-end general fund fund balance at June 30, 2023 is $44.0 million. Based on the preliminary fiscal year 2324 revenues of $52.6 million and expenditures and transfers out of $52.1 million, the projected general fund fund balance at June 30, 2024 is $44.5 million. Additionally, the city council requested that the discussion to allocate the fiscal year 2122 year-end surplus of $2.1 million be discussed after the strategic planning session conducted in March. Staff is recommending that the city council also commit the $2.1 million fiscal year 2122 year-end surplus to the deferred maintenance, capital assets, and infrastructure reserves. In total, the city council is being asked to allocate $2.6 million to the deferred maintenance, capital assets, and infrastructure reserves. This chart provides the allocation of the projected $44.5 million general fund fund balance at June 30, 2024. It's worth noting that this chart assumes the $0.5 million fiscal year 2324 budget surplus and the $2.1 million fiscal year 2122 year-end surpluses are committed to the deferred maintenance, capital assets, and infrastructure replacement reserves. This chart provides some additional details on the different categories from the general fund fund balance, how the balance is calculated, and the projected balance at June 30, 2024. The preliminary fiscal year 2324 budget book includes a summary of the general fund fund balance categories similar to this screen on page eight as well. We would now like to go into more detail on the department budgets. The first department on that list is Administration, and so I'll now turn the presentation over to Justin Martin, the city's deputy city manager, to provide more information.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The Functions 02, 03, 04, 06, and 08 budgets make up the comprehensive Administration Department budget. The Administration Department includes several different divisions, including Communications, Human Resources, Risk Management, and Labor Relations, the City Clerk's Office, Information Technology Services, the City Attorney's Office, and General Administration, which serves as a catch-all of many other services, including Animal Control and Shelter Services, Homeless Services, Governmental Affairs, Insurance and Liabilities, and Trash and Recycling. As you see from the organizational chart on the slide, the department is comprised of a team of eight city employees with 7.5 FTEs allocated to Administration and 0.5 FTE allocated directly to the city council. And now I'll bid about each of the department's division's roles. The Communications Team works to provide a thorough communications platform comprised of the city website, social media channels, press releases, video and cable channels, mobile and desktop applications, and print materials to enhance community outreach and to encourage engagement. The Human Resources Team directs all full-time and part-time recruitments, administers employee benefits, maintains compliance with state and federal workplace regulations, provides professional development opportunities, implements the city's employee wellness programs, and plans regular employee engagement activities and celebrations. The General Administrative Team monitors and corresponds on issues related to the city's legislative platform, oversees the contract with Mercy House to provide homeless outreach and diversion services, oversees the Animal Control and Shelter Services Agreement with the city of Mission Viejo, and takes the lead on trash and recycling programs, mandates, and compliance. The City Clerk's Office Division falls within the Administration Department and is the steward of the city's records. The office includes the city clerk and deputy city clerk positions. The main duties of the City Clerk's Office are to prepare city council meeting documents, administer duties related to oaths of office for elected and appointed officials, respond to public records requests, comply with FPPC regulations, comply with required trainings and filing requirements for elected and appointed officials, to train and comply with the Brown Act, and to assure strong record retention practices. As it relates to personnel, the Administration Budget proposes that one new full-time position be added in the classification of a full-time management assistant. This addition would eliminate the part-time management assistant that is currently budgeted. In addition, this budget reclassifies the deputy city manager to assistant city manager to have the classification title match the actual job duties of the role. And finally, there is a new part-time position being added into the classification of management aide. This is an entry-level administrative position. That will be the initial role for advancement in the Management Assistant, Management Analyst, and Senior Management Analyst series. For the City Clerk's Office, the big initiative to embark upon in the upcoming fiscal year is the Comprehensive Municipal Code Update. And even with this project added, the budget has decreased because there are no election costs included as it is a non-election year. For the upcoming fiscal year, the city has budgeted $425,000 to pay for the services of the City Attorney's Office. The Legal Services Agreement with BBNK includes a monthly retainer, as well as other services for a variable hourly cost. This has all been factored into the budgeted $425,000 for this function. The non-departmental budget is also known as Function 06, includes the city's insurance premium, CalPERS responsibilities, property tax fees, the city's contingency fund, and other citywide general supplies and materials that don't fall within a specific department. This budget function decreased significantly due to the $4.8 million CalPERS unfunded liability payment that took place in the current fiscal year. And finally, we have the IT Services Division, or Function 08. This function only saw a very minor increase in the areas of communications and computer software, much of which is attached to the new outdoor Wi-Fi project at Crown Valley Park and to the newly implemented Rubrik Backup System that the council approved in April. This wraps up the administration portion of the presentation, and I will now hand it over back to Finance Director Agrelius to share more about the fiscal year 2324 Finance Department's budget.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Martin. I'm back again. So we're going to talk about the Finance Department budget, which I'm excited about. The city's Finance Department consists of two main functions, finance and purchasing. There are a total of six full-time positions, including the department, and Finance works directly with the city's Investment, Banking, and Audit Committee. That committee meets on a quarterly basis. The Investment, Banking, and Audit Committee is responsible for reviewing and making recommendations to the city council on the city's investment policy and the draft annual comprehensive financial report, or the financial statements. They also periodically review the city's investment portfolio and investment practices to ensure conformance with the city's investment policy. The Finance Department manages the city's finances, develops the city's operating budget, and assists with the five-year capital improvement program. The Finance Department also ensures city's funds are invested in accordance with the city's investment policy, processes payroll, and oversees the external audit and preparation of the audited financial statements. Goals for the upcoming year for Finance include actively managing city investments. As City Manager Loturno and I noted on the March 31st investment report, staff has identified an investment strategy that will earn a significantly higher rate of return while adhering to the top two priorities of the investment policy, to maintain safety and liquidity. The city has invested approximately $26 million in U.S. Treasuries to date, earning approximately 4.5% on average. This strategy has contributed to the projected increase to investment income of $1.2 million, or about 250% over the fiscal year 2223 budget. Additionally, in accordance with the city's strategic plan, Finance will continue to analyze and monitor fee structures. We also anticipate issuing an RFP for audit services in the coming year as fiscal year 2223 will be the last year under contract with our current audit firm. Finance will also work to review current internal controls and recommend changes to conform to industry standards and best practices if necessary. Thank you. That concludes my presentation on the Finance Division. I will now turn the presentation over to our Chief of Police Services, Isaac Flores, to discuss the Police Services Division.
Thank you, Trevor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. I want to highlight the five core service areas that Police Services provides. First and foremost, we respond to emergency calls for service, and in doing so, we utilize police reports to document and investigate criminal activity. We address quality of life issues and concerns. This can include, but is not limited to, confronting homelessness, e-bike issues, and loud exhaust concerns. We also strengthen community trust through outreach and education. Lastly, we manage overall public safety at city-sponsored events such as summer concerts, various celebrations, and winter holiday events. For the fast approaching and new fiscal year, we prioritized five important goals during the development of the city's updated strategic plan. The first goal is to maintain the superior standard of police support and community service that this city is accustomed to receiving from the Orange County Sheriff's Department. Next, we will increase our efficiency through directed patrols, evidence-based enforcement, and the use of technology. We're also expanding our flagship volunteer base group, also known as the PAC Team, to increase connectivity with local businesses through a program called the Business Enhancement Team. We will continue to build on the existing Adopt the School Program structure to enhance our response capabilities at each of the schools within the city. And last, but certainly not least, we will continue to increase community buy-in through the growth of our volunteer programs, as well as the neighborhood watch groups. The Sheriff's Department Bargaining Units are currently engaged in contract negotiations with the county. The Police Services contract with the Orange County Sheriff's Department is expected to increase to $17.9 million, up from $16.6 million in the fiscal year 2223. This anticipated 8.2% increase is on par with other local law enforcement agencies within Orange County. After a staffing analysis, we will be adding one full-time employee. This will be a non-sworn office specialist, which will be utilized for administrative functions. Lastly, it should be noted that $150,000 of the Police Services contract will be offset by the Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund, which originates from a state grant intended to supplement frontline law enforcement services. Thank you, and this concludes the Police Services section. At this time, I would turn the presentation over to Community Development Director Jonathan Orduna.
Thank you, Chief Flores, and good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. The Community Development Department includes four key functions: Administration, Planning, Building and Safety, and Code Compliance. In addition to general coordination, direction, and support for the department, the Administration function includes lead responsibility for department contract and grant management and reception services. The Planning function includes current and advanced planning, economic development, and community preservation services and activities. The Building and Safety function includes building permit review, grading permit review, and development inspection services and activities. And the Code Compliance function includes complaint response, community education, and code violation resolution services and activities. And last but not least, the department collectively staffs the city's Planning Commission. With regard to major goals for the upcoming fiscal year, the department will continue work on implementation of the Intergov Permit and Tracking and Workflow Software System in collaboration with the Public Works Department. And this new program will, it's the city's first cloud-based permit tracking system. It also will provide significant upgrades that will assist staff and performance of their daily duties, as well as an online portal that will facilitate a range of online permitting and also permit tracking for applicants. So it's significant improvement over what we currently operate. The department will also continue work wrapping up the city's updates to the city's local coastal programs and Trailmaster Plan. In response to new legislation coming out of Sacramento, the department will be looking to create objective design guidelines and standards. These will effectively safeguard the city in the event that a developer looks to preempt the city's existing discretionary design review process, taking advantage of options provided under new state laws. The department will also be undertaking an update of the Gateway Specific Plan that will look to incorporate lessons learned over the last decade of development in the Gateway into that plan. The department will continue ongoing efforts toward housing element certification, as well as related zoning code updates. And lastly, the department will be commencing Phase Two of the General Plan Update with Phase One wrapping with the end of this fiscal year. In terms of budget highlights, in support of these items, there are a number of staffing modifications proposed within the department. There is one new full-time position that will be added to the department's staff as recapped by Director Agrelius, which is at the Planning Manager Classification. And there are a number of reclassifications of existing positions, including reclassification of the Development Services Manager to Deputy Community Development Director, reclassification of an Administrative Secretary position to Management Analyst, and reclassification of one full-time Code Compliance Inspector to Senior Code Compliance Inspector. And collectively, these moves are intended to expand the bandwidth for planning functions within the department in support of city strategic plan initiatives. As noted in the draft budget, there are increases proposed to computer software spending. Primarily, these are related to one-time expenses in support of the new software system. There's also an increase noted to a number of different development-related expenditures. And what is important to keep in mind when you see those increases, where there are increases in development-related expenditures, there are also increases in revenue. So these expenditures will always be offset. There is an increase proposed to non-offsetting planning professional services, which, this is the line item that supports the bulk of the city council-directed strategic plan items. And lastly, the budget includes $375,000 budgeted for the General Plan Update. And this is part of a four-year commitment made by the council commencing in 2021 to fund the Comprehensive General Plan Update with $375,000 allocated for each year. So this is year three of that process. In total, this will set aside $1.5 million to fund that effort. And that concludes my comments, and I will now hand the presentation off to Public Works Director Jackie Scott.
Thank you, Director Orduna. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The Public Works Department is responsible for the oversight of the city-owned infrastructure within streets, facilities, and parks. Public Works staff implements the capital improvement program, including identifying and scoping the projects approved by the city council, then progressing those projects through design and construction. Public Works also processes and issues encroachment permits, addresses traffic engineering matters, and oversees the Traffic and Transportation Commission, implements the Water Quality Program to meet state mandates, and implements smart city initiatives. As new development projects are processed through Planning Commission, Public Works collaborates with the Community Development Department to participate in the development and review process on matters that impact public right-of-way. The Fiscal Year 2324 Work Program contains dozens of programs and initiatives, and I'd like to highlight just a few. Phase Two of the Asset Management Program for City Facilities, launch of the Computerized Maintenance Management System, seeking expansion of the Laguna Niguel's Summer Trolley, update the Residential Traffic Management Policy, implement city-wide active transportation study, applying for FEMA grants for earth movement remediation on the Paws Road, complete the electric vehicle station use study and policy proposal, complete energy assessment study and implementation plan, implement the adopted 2324 Capital Improvement Program, and implement new Intergov online permitting system in partnership with community development. The Public Works Department has requested the reclassification of the Contract Administrator to a Principal Engineer to assist with complex and high-profile projects and programs, as well as recommend the reclassification of the Engineering Tech to an Assistant Engineer. The Public Works budget contains funding increases as the result of cost increases and ongoing inflation, and includes a number of initiatives outlined in the approved strategic plan. Next is Director Rivera to discuss the Parks and Recreation Budget.
Thank you, Director Scott. Thank you, City Council and Madam Mayor. The Parks and Recreation Department offers a variety of recreational services and activities and essential services for seniors. We provide enrichment classes, special events, youth and teen programs. We operate the Laguna Nigal Aquatic Center, oversee skateboard and soccer park, permitting and scheduling sports user groups, maintain athletic facilities, the Sea Country Senior Community Center, our Senior Transportation Program, and the Senior Mobility Program. Some of our goals for next fiscal year include: implementation of the new facility use policies and fee structure, increased rental usage at Sea Country and Crown Valley Community Center, expand outreach efforts for senior programs, provide education and programs for city trails and open space, grow and promote outreach for programs, volunteers, and staff, continued growth of youth programs, facilitate the Three-Day Sea Country Festival, and update facility use policy for the skate park, and update general parks' use policy. This budget does include some staffing modifications, reclassifying the Recreation Manager to Deputy Parks and Recreation Director, reclassify one full-time Recreation Coordinator to Recreation Supervisor, and the addition of one part-time Recreation Coordinator. This budget accounts for a full calendar year of community programs and special events and a fourteen percent increase in Mission Viejo Animal Services contract. At this time, that concludes my report, and we'll pass it on back to Public Works Director Jackie Scott.
Thank you, Director Rivera. The next topic I'm going to cover is the Capital Improvement Program. But before I go into the new proposed project list, I wanted to acknowledge accomplishments from the current fiscal year, including the renovations of the City Council chambers, replacement of the synthetic turf at Chaparosa Park, completion of several elements within the park's modernization program, installation of vehicle detection improvements at key intersections, and repaving poor-conditioned streets as part of the Residential Overlay Program. These accomplishments were only possible because of the incredible team within Public Works Department and the partnerships we enjoy with other city departments. I am honored to work with such an incredible group of talented and dedicated employees. The proposed Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four Capital Improvement Program has thirteen projects totaling over six point nine million in improvements across four categories. The list of proposed projects includes one facility project, two park projects, nine street projects, and one transportation project totaling nearly seven million dollars. An update on the Pavement Management Program. A pavement management program assists policymakers in the development of roadway budgets and ensures compliance with OCTA requirements and Measure M-two eligibility. Some of the critical elements of the pavement management program include a complete pavement inventory and field assessment of roadway conditions, an inventory of pavement age and work history, and a projection of funding levels for future projects. PCI is a numerical rating of a pavement condition index based on the type and severity of distress observed on the pavement surface. PCI is between zero and one hundred, with one hundred considered a brand-new street and zero is considered a dirt road. Laguna Nigal's roadway network is currently rated an overall seventy-eight, with eighty established as the city's benchmark goal. Each year, the city invests in pavement improvement projects through the adoption of the CIP. And as long as the investment continues at the recommended funding level, the city will continue to improve pavement conditions to reach an overall PCI of eighty. Currently, two-thirds of the city's roadways are considered in good or very good range, with approximately one-third that fall below the acceptable range and are considered fair, poor, or very poor condition. A successful pavement management program has both a preventative maintenance element to keep good streets rated in the good category and a pavement rehabilitation program to treat streets that have fallen into the fair or poor categories. A critical component of the city's approved pavement management program is the Residential Resurfacing Project, also known as the Slurry Seal Program. This project is constructed by enioli, which is every other year, during the summer to take advantage of warm summer weather and to reduce conflicts with school traffic. Zones three and four are scheduled to begin construction in June twenty-two-three, and Zones five and six will be scheduled for construction in June twenty-two-five. The Slurry Seal Program is the most cost-effective way for the city to extend the life of residential streets and save money. In future years, several arterial roadways will require pavement rehabilitation. This is the removal of the top one to two inches of asphalt by a large grinding machine, followed by the addition of an overlay of new asphalt. This treatment is generally most appropriate for arterial roadways because of the heavy traffic loading experienced along arterial streets, including high volumes and high rates of truck traffic. Alicia Parkway, Golden Lantern, Highlands, Paseo de Colinas, and Rancho Nigal Road all will require programming for a rehabilitation in a future-year CIP. I'm going to go over the list of proposed projects in Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four. The Sea Country Senior and Community Center Roof Replacement Project will replace the roof system on the building that was originally installed over thirty years ago. The construction is anticipated to start in January twenty-two-four and be completed by June twenty-two-four, pending winter weather conditions. The Marina Hills Park Improvement Project was designed in Fiscal Year Twenty-two, Twenty-three and is expected to start the construction phase in December twenty-two-three. This project was created in response to the park's needs assessment completed in twenty-two-two and will expand the existing half-basketball court to a full court, add sidewalk connectivity throughout the park, add wave-finding signage, and new shade and benches at the sports fields. The Crown Valley Park Wi-Fi Project will install an outdoor Wi-Fi network to support the community's use of Crown Valley Park. Phase One of this project has already begun, which installs Wi-Fi at the amphitheater, and Phase Two will continue the expansion of the Wi-Fi throughout the rest of Crown Valley Park starting this fall. The Accessible Pedestrian Signal Push-Button Project is an annual program funded through the city's CDBG allocation to upgrade the pedestrian activated phase of the traffic signal to meet current ADA standards, which includes an audible function for the hearing impaired. To date, the city has upgraded forty-eight intersections, and this year's allocation will upgrade an additional eight intersections. The Pacific Island Drive Drainage and Wall Improvement Project replaces a dilapidated temporary sandbag structure with a permanent concrete drainage structure. Public Works has obtained easements from the underlying property owner for access to maintain the improvements and will routinely remove accumulated debris. The new permanent drainage system will create a direct connection into the storm drain, and runoff to Pacific Island Drive at this location will be eliminated. The project design is complete, the easement documents have been signed, and construction is anticipated to start in March twenty-two-four. The Local Roadway Pavement Rehabilitation Project was created to address a number of arterials that were damaged through the winter storms and deteriorated substantially after heavy rain events. The project will patch cracked seal and slurry sections of roadway that are currently in poor condition to improve overall pavement condition along streets such as Old Ranch Road, Rancho Nigal Road, and Tessier. The project will be ready for bid in July of twenty-two-three and is anticipated to start construction in January twenty-two-four. The Aliso Creek Road and Traffic Improvements will include a slurry seal from Molten Parkway to La Paz, new roadway striping to improve the bike lanes and calm traffic speeds, and new video detection that will detect bicycles and improve the function of the traffic signals at Molten Parkway and La Paz Road. The project was created to improve pavement coordination, pavement condition, and address high speeds near the senior and community center and elementary school and past residential neighborhoods. The Residential Overlay Program will provide asphalt resurfacing for failed residential streets that are damaged beyond a slurry seal repair. This annual project addresses streets that are severely cracked and require rehabilitation or the grind and overlay to return the street to a new condition. The Sidewalk Improvement Program is intended to remove and replace sections of sidewalk that are broken, cracked, or no longer meet the requirements of ADA. This year's project is funded through CDBG and will start construction in early twenty-two-four. The Traffic Signal Equipment Upgrades Program will replace traffic signal cabinets and computerized hardware that no longer function with the standardized technology used in modern traffic signal equipment. Many of the traffic signal cabinets and controllers are original to the city, are over thirty years of age, and contain equipment programmed with software that is outdated and unable to properly communicate with other essential components. This often leads to signal failure, signals in red flash, and blackouts. The equipment is no longer supported and in-kind replacements are no longer available. This year's program will replace four cabinets and all of the internal equipment needed to reliably run traffic signals. It is recommended that this program be funded on an annual basis to continue replacing outdated cabinets across the city's seventy-eight traffic signals. The Active Transportation Study and Bicycle Green Zone Project includes a citywide study of potential active transportation improvements, as well as a pilot program to upgrade and install new bike lane standards with green conflict zone painting. Green Conflict Zone Painting is intended to raise driver awareness of bicycle use within the city's roadways and reduce conflicts between cyclists and motor vehicles approaching an intersection. The pilot program will add green-painted bicycle zones on Alicia Parkway, Aliso Creek, Heather Ridge, and La Paz, all around the business area near the Zigarot Building. The Public Works Department was successful in obtaining a Highway Safety Improvement Project Grant and a Safe Streets for All Grant to pay for approximately half the project costs. The Golden Lantern Median Modifications at Serenity Lane Project will modify the landscape median along Golden Lantern to improve site distance at the intersection. This improvement was requested by residents and the Traffic and Transportation Commission in conjunction with traffic calming measures to help reduce speeds and address accidents and complaints from residents at this location. Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four is budgeted for design, and construction will be proposed in the Fiscal Year Twenty-four, Twenty-five CIP budget. That concludes my presentation. City Manager Letourneau.
Thank you so much. As I'm sure you will all agree, we truly have a great deal to be proud of here in Laguna Nigal. As one of the safest cities in the state, we will continue to be well-protected. As one of the most stunningly beautiful cities, we will continue to be meticulously maintained. And as one of the most fiscally sound cities, we will continue to be fiscally conservative while maintaining a healthy reserve. I would like to thank all of you, Mayor and City Council, for your trust and support throughout this year. This budget is possible through a team-based and collaborative effort that involves employees from all departments and at all levels of this organization. Thank you to the city's executive leadership team and to each department's budget liaisons for assisting in the development of this budget. And a special thanks to Finance Director Trevor Agrelius and Finance Manager Kristin Faurier and the Finance Department team, who spent many hours preparing this detailed budget. So this evening, Council, we're recommending that you receive the proposed budget. You direct staff to make any adjustments and schedule the final budget presentation for the June twentieth City Council meeting. You commit the Fiscal Year Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-four a half a million dollars budget surplus to the Deferred Maintenance and Capital Asset and Infrastructure Replacement Reserve. And you can commit the Fiscal Year Twenty-two, Twenty-one, Twenty-two, two point one million surplus to the Infrastructure Replacement Reserve as well. And that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much, and great job, staff. This was incredible presentation, so thank you so much. Does my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Genoey.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you to our staff for putting together this budget. This is not just a thing we do once a year for our budget workshop. This is really a year-round discussion we have, and many of these discussions we've been having over the last few months, notably at our March sixth Strategic Plan Workshop. We laid out our priorities, what we want to see in the coming year, our goals, and they are all laid out in this budget. For everybody in the public and everybody watching, if you haven't taken a look, we have a thorough budget presented here, an operating and capital improvement budget, which it really, this is an incredible document because it's easy to digest, it's easy for everybody to understand, and it tracks the budgets over the previous three years and what is being proposed for the following year. And so I really appreciate this document being prepared for us. I do have a couple of questions, and most of my questions were answered in the previous week when I met with staff and I met with our Finance Director to go over some of the finer points. Captain Flores, you said that we are anticipating a sheriff's contract at seventeen point nine million, correct?
That's just an estimate at this time, Councilmember.
And that's an estimate because the county is still in negotiations with a new contract with the Sheriff's Department, is that right?
That's correct, and that was based off of other recent contracts that were approved in other cities with their bargaining units.
Okay, great, so that number could go up, could go down a little. We're still waiting to see, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Finance Director, does this proposed budget account for the new MOU that the council approved with our city employees?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make sure all the numbers are up to date with that because we passed that just a couple meetings ago. Director Scott, all right, so page eighty-four. Spent a lot of time looking at page eighty-four, so I'm going to flip to that right now. In fact, it's so important, the font is smaller. This is a pretty incredible table right here because it lays out about five years of capital improvement projects, correct?
Yes, it has. It's forward-looking at future projects.
And I see there's about ninety million dollars worth of projects. Some of those have identified funding sources, some do not. I'm looking specifically at La Paz Road Earth Movement Evaluation, Mitigation, and Remediation. We've budgeted about sixteen million dollars for that project. Can you tell me where we are in the process in applying for that grant?
Absolutely. We are in the very beginning stages of that. We have made contact with CalOES and FEMA, and we've started the initial paperwork. We've met with FEMA in the field and kind of walked the project so they had a better sense of what it was all about. My understanding is the process to fully go through the complete phases of the application and receive notification of an award takes approximately one year.
And with a lot of these funding projects, every project is a little bit different, but with a lot of these, it's my understanding that the city is responsible for paying for the costs upfront and then get reimbursed on the back end from whichever agency is providing the grant funding. Is that accurate?
Yes, so my experience in working with federal funds that trickle down through appropriation bills to the state level, through CalOES or Caltrans, we always do the work first. We pay the invoices for the contractors and the vendors, and then we submit for reimbursement after the fact.
So it's to our benefit to have flexibility in our budget and to have the proposed funds, I think it's around two point six million dollars to go to our capital improvement reserve?
We do have some large obligations that we'll be looking at having to pay in the years ahead. That's why we are aggressively seeking the grant funding to help the city, but we are going to likely have to front the money first.
Okay. And I also see the Crown Valley Parkway westbound widening project, that's about fifteen million dollars, right?
It is, and we, again, have already applied for one substantial grant, I think around seven million. That's only about half the cost that is necessary to fund the entire project, so we will be seeking some additional grants this fall. And some of that work could potentially be given, the funding could be given to us upfront, but not all of it. And it's only a portion, so we, again, will be paying some bills and then having to seek some reimbursements later.
All right, thank you very much. Those are all my questions for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Genoey. Councilmember Winston.
Thank you. Yeah, I too had questions about the FEMA grant and the La Paz Earth Movement. Yeah, I too had questions about the FEMA grant and the La Paz Earth Movement. Some of those were addressed, but also things that weren't discussed is not necessarily financially related, but more of what the residents can expect to see regarding that project and the closing of lanes and shifting of lanes and so forth. Would you mind sharing what the projection is and how long that project should take?
Absolutely. So recently, we closed the two southbound lanes and detoured traffic. This is a short-term interim measure because we are designing more longer-term interim measure that will take traffic off the southbound lane and put two-way traffic on the other side of the median, so it'll be one lane in each direction. That's going to be a longer-term condition while we secure all the funding for a permanent repair of the roadway.
Yeah, I think that it makes sense to spend a little bit of time on this, seeing as how the amount that's, the estimated cost is going to be approximately the third-largest capital improvement project in the city. So this is important that we make sure that it gets done, and it gets done right, and even if it's not done overnight. So thank you for your work in securing the FEMA grant. I did have a question on, for Director Rivera, why is there a 14% increase in the contract for Mission Viejo Animal Services?
I'll pass it on to Deputy City Manager Justin Martin.
That works.
Good evening, Councilmember Winstead, thank you for your question. The increase, the costs obviously are shared with several cities. The council will actually be seeing the contract come at the next regular city council meeting. But the cost increase, it goes up every year. It's basically the cost of goods and services increases due to inflation. They're seeing that in their city as well, which includes staffing, facilities, and contractors.
Okay, I wasn't sure if there was just extra pets in the city or something along those lines. Okay. I, so, just making sure I got all of my points. I did want to thank Finance Director Agrelius for restructuring the city's liquid investments to generate a 243% increase in investment income while still maintaining the liquidity and low-risk investments, so thank you, that's great job right there. And then I also want to thank Director Scott for being responsive to the resident safety concerns and addressing those, the median issues, and Director Ordunia for really just anticipation of the concerns regarding the increased staff costs and having that being offset, so kind of anticipating what the city councils are, when we see things go up, we want to make sure there's a corresponding number for the revenues to offset that. So thank you very much, I'm done.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Winstead. City Clerk Assistant, do we have any request-to-speak forms on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have any additional city council comments for staff? Member Jenaway, sorry.
Thank you, I like this budget. It's a balanced budget. We promised the residents of Laguna Niguel that we will deliver a balanced budget, high-quality services at the best possible price, and I think we're doing that with this budget. A budget is a statement of priorities, and I think this lays out pretty well our priorities here in Laguna Niguel. It's important to balance our long-term goals with the immediate needs of the residents. One of those immediate needs I see is the La Paz project. It's not just an infrastructure project, it's a public safety issue, that roadway. It's important that we have a safe roadway, not just in terms of the hillside and being stable, but also in the short term when we are restructuring the lanes for that to work smoothly to avoid accidents, because I live over there, I know exactly how frequently accidents can occur at that intersection of La Paz and Rancho Niguel, and that is very much a public safety issue right now, which is why I am, I'm satisfied in committing our surplus funds from last year's budget to our capital improvements because I know that will go directly towards the La Paz rehabilitation project, which is greatly needed. And it's an expensive project. That's exactly why we're reaching out to federal authorities to seek extra funding. We've successfully passed the first phase of approval in that process. Hopefully, we will go all the way and get the funding that we need. But as Director Scott said, we need cash to fund upfront so that we can make sure that situation is rehabilitated. We don't have a magic wand like the federal government to just raise a debt ceiling or print more cash at the local level. We've got to balance our books with cash on hand, and I think that's exactly what this budget does, and I'm pleased to see it in front of us, and I approve it.
Thank you. Councilmember Winstead?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Jenaway's comments, and I too am happy to see the $0.5 million surplus going directly to deferred maintenance. I think that's a very wise choice, so I too would approve this.
Thank you, and I just want to say excellent job again to staff for creating an easy-to-read budget again, and welcome, Director, or Finance Director, Trevor. Thank you so much, your hard work on all of this, and to staff. And I'm really happy to see the staffing levels increasing and reclassifying. One is way overdue, so I'm very excited about this. And we, as the council, gave you all a lot to do on the strategic plan, so whatever you guys need, we are here to support you in that. So thank you for all of your hard work and your dedication and all you do every day to keep us safe and have a beautiful city. So may I get a motion to move the staff's recommendation?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, so exciting. Thank you, everyone, to all for your comments and questions, seeing no further discussion. I will ask our city manager to bring back this item with any adjustments for a final presentation at the June 20th-23 regular city council meeting. So that concludes our study session, and seeing there's no further business, our meeting is adjourned at 6:58. Thank you and have a nice evening.